I'm gonna ask you to repeat that as soon as that red light comes on.
There it is.
Let me tell you something. And I'm, yeah, we were recording, yes.
I make a motion come out of executive session.
Motion come out of executive session, Mr. Wilcox.
Hey y'all, I thought Mr. Johnson had something to add to about the coat hanger.
Well, do you have a second?
Alright, second.
Second, Mr. Keith. All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Now, Ms. Dandy, would you like to continue your conversation?
No sir.
I thought Ms. Dandy said quite enough.
Uh, that...
Alright, so we didn't...
Okay, moving on to the agenda then, we'll skip over that part.
We're ready for our road plan, sirs.
Oh, you ready?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Alright.
Oh, see, they got it in print for them.
Way.
Got what, print?
Got books.
Yeah, I got a bunch of them.
Yeah, no, we're gonna see, uh...
One for Laura.
We're gonna put Greg to the test if he does get elected, you know, as a chancellor. If he's gonna be coming over saying, "Oh yeah, we need that fourth courtroom, fellas."
And, and the covered part.
Yeah, and the covered part, yeah.
Look at the code on the last page.
Thank you.
I can see some money tied up here.
Oh yeah. They can have one.
Yeah.
And you couldn't print any bigger than that?
Okay. I'm sure y'all will want to take some time to go through, cause this road by road.
Aw man, you couldn't break this down by district?
No sir.
Why?
No sir, we on a unit system.
Well, I mean, we could still be in the unit system, at least so we can look at our own district. We'll tell what roads without having to go by line by line.
I got the wrong pair of glasses.
Really?
Have you got anything with a bigger print?
No.
I got the wrong pair of glasses.
Wrong pair.
That means you're out. A little blurry there, and it's pretty.
Where are there two Andrew Chapel roads? Oh, was it north of, north of Tricken Bridge and south of Tricken Bridge? North of Tricken Bridge is 2.60 miles. Does anybody remember when we had five million dollars out of the bond money going to Andrew Chapel?
No, I don't remember that.
Yeah, I remember we had it going to several different things.
Yeah, it was out there.
Yeah, every time somebody else needed something, they came to Andrew Chapel and got it.
And we, uh...
That's right.
I'm thinking that was that last 20 million that got cut.
Twenty million, we could've done all of this. We wouldn't even be here now.
Oh no, y'all, this is forty million dollars, not twenty.
No.
No, no, yeah, if you do do everything that's in here.
Yeah.
Our estimate of them was thirty-six million four hundred and eleven dollars. That'll be on your last page in this thing. And that's, that's total dollars. Now, what you gotta do, keep in mind, this is the Rankin County Road Plan, which is a living and breathing animal. Because some things that are mentioned in here have possibly been addressed since we started. Because, you know, we had to ride and measure every road. So, the next one is done, you're supposed to do this every year. That won't have to be done again, because we got the lengths and the widths and that kind of stuff. You just go, go through and estimate what needs to be done. And if, if you notice in here, we do it by percentages. So, you know, if, if we had a road that, uh, that needed, uh, twenty percent of work on it, uh, next year, depending on how many log trucks or whatever the case may be on it, it may be forty percent. So, it would just be an update on that. You wouldn't have to go back and reevaluate the roads every year. But that's pretty time, you could say this was pretty time for saying, we show whether it's, whether it's open ditch or buried or whatever.
I know in our last time we brought this up, you may mention, or Dale did one, that it costs us eighty-five thousand overlay road.
Yeah.
Per mile. That's high.
Yeah.
No, that's, well, that's an inch and a half.
You think that's accurate?
That's an inch and a half, but at our rate, it's somewhere in that, yeah, it's in that range.
When I first was elected, Jay, it was like seventy-something.
No, it's more like sixty, I thought.
Well, asphalt went up with the price of all of it, but it didn't come back down.
Yeah, it didn't come back down, asphalt didn't come back down when the price of all of it...
I know a couple of years ago, sixty.
Well, it hasn't been...
Sixty.
Sixty.
It was fifty when I came on board.
Like, before I was elected.
Huh?
Before I was elected.
It was fifty when I came on board.
No, anything.
Two thousand miles.
But it went up substantially in the last...
Ten years ago.
Well, I mean, I know that's including doing the road shoulder and all that.
No, no, that's asphalt.
That's asphalt.
What? That's just asphalt?
Yes.
In the front part of this thing, we're, we're, we're showing you prices. When we started working on this thing, you know, we're showing base asphalt seventy-two dollars, surface asphalt seventy-four dollars, a million, two dollars, twenty thousand, square yard.
And that's our cost for our six months bid?
It was at that time, I don't know where we all right. That's why I say it's gonna end up changing.
And that's where y'all got the eighties five thousand from?
I'm sorry, what?
Is that where you got the eighty-five thousand from?
Yeah, and that's figured on an inch and a half, if you got a road that's, you know, it must probably let's put out...
So, what if you milled it?
If you milled it, it's so much a square yard, if you milled a whole mile, it'd be, ooh...
We're showing two dollars twenty-five cents a square yard for milling.
That's a square yard.
So, if you multiply your length times the width and divide it by nine, and multiply by two and a quarter, I'll tell you what...
Yeah, if you link them.
See, it's kinda like...
What did I say, you got concrete?
You said that real fast.
You got a road, we got a concrete road?
I'd have to put that in an equation.
We got some concrete roads.
Huh?
We have some.
I didn't know we did concrete road, concrete.
We got up in, um...
Baypoint, that's it?
No, it's in, in, Baypoint is, and there's, um...
It's in Castlewood, then?
No, it's not in Castlewood, it's off of North Shore.
But I didn't know we did.
Now, there was one off, up there at Woods District, that was asphalt, or concrete to start with, but we ended up finishing with asphalt, didn't we?
They steal some concrete up there.
We have never been doing, we have never done concrete, have we?
Oh yeah.
We had to redo all those roads in Baypoint.
Yeah, in fact, yeah, I know we did, I, I did do them, I did some of them. You repaired them, in fact, it's quite a bit of repairing Baypoint.
Are our state aid roads included in here?
No.
No.
This is county roads, in other words, state aid gives us there. Matter of fact, we should get there and report within the next few days. On week, we reached, this one in the last two weeks, did our annual state aid maintenance inspection. And they will send us a report of what they say that we need to do on the state aid roads. And then, you're supposed to address that within the year, within the next year, because then we'll have another inspection. And if they have mentioned something in the inspection report that you didn't address or attempt to address, they bring that to your attention properly.
Now, how soon are we supposed to do those state aid roads that we just, all them in Walters District that we just did?
How soon?
Are we supposed to bid that out?
The thirteenth of May?
What?
Next Monday, they're supposed to start.
When are they gonna start?
Those additional...
Oh, we already bid it out?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's... Well, you didn't have to, the additional funds, you didn't have to bid.
Uh, we just went with our original contract?
Just like a change order, yes.
Okay.
You mean like old forty-three north? Is that what he's talking about?
Lake Road, I think, was one of them, I don't remember the names.
P. L. X. Lake, oh, he got P. L. X. Lake and, and Dooley, because Shallow is in...
Oh, Greg's District?
Yeah, and then, uh, Greenfield Circle is in yours and Greg's.
No.
What's the name of it?
Greenfield, that's just in mine.
Oh.
No, part of it, all of it in it.
Green, no, you don't get in?
I ain't got nothing over there.
Yeah, it's mine.
Oh, you don't go in?
You ain't done no District Five, don't be thinking you did.
I thought you split there on, uh...
That's all on me.
Greenfield. And that's the road, just like that road.
I had Greenfield Circle back in one.
That really needed, of the state aid.
And then, right.
Missed for decent road.
As a result of this...
Well, except it's too, too narrow.
First of all, you would have to adopt it.
They're not widening the road.
I would hope you'd adopt it next week.
You're talking about Greenfield?
That's what you got, because you're going to do it every year.
Oh yeah, it's, back to the state aid, I mean...
I know it, it is, that's part of the one that they, they talk about doing work on.
So, is there a way you can print me out a, a list of this? With just the streets in my district?
Oh, Greenfield, run goes all the way up there by those.
Might take me a little time, but I can.
Alright.
Yeah, Greenfield Road goes up by Patrick Farm Company.
It does in a...
It's on the state aid plan.
Where do you rate them at? Where do they come in and rate?
No.
Like, as in prioritize, where do you prioritize?
No, no prioritize, prioritize is right up here. Supervisor prioritize.
One of the ones I think needs resurfacing.
Why? In the road plan. You have something here that says you what needs to be done on all the roads. And then, it's up to the supervisor to set a priority.
That's, that's... You mean your state aid says it needs a priority?
Yeah, state aid says it needs a priority.
Well, don't I need somebody to tell me what condition this road's in? Or is that my job?
I'm almost certain that one, that's on the state aid, says this is where some money's...
You don't have it.
They tell you where it's going.
Don't need it.
I'm just, no, no, that's the point.
They need to put the money back over there.
You shook your head twice, Craig, when I asked you questions. Is it my job to decide?
They're not doing it.
What condition it's in?
One thing, luckily you got a reconstruction that uncovered in the state aid.
So...
Could I ask a question? And I, I don't mean to keep beating the dead horse, but let's just take Andrew Chapel Road North, for example.
It is dead, you're right about that.
Estimated construction cost is six hundred and ninety-two thousand, three hundred and fifty, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and ninety-five cents.
Yes. See, I don't have one in front of me.
It's been forty percent reconstructed, says.
Six hundred and ninety-two thousand, okay. Yeah, it's, it's, I, I don't know what your question is, but it's, uh, the length of it's two point six miles, the width of it's eighteen feet. Reconstructed, we're recommending forty percent of it be, uh, uh, reconstruction, constructed. Uh, we got ten percent of it for base repair, sixty percent of overlay, and of course, restriping a hundred percent.
Okay, that's if we do, that's if we did the whole road from, from Tricken Bridge north to Baker Lane.
Yes, sir, we do these percentages, yes.
And... Who has recommended that this road be? Was this state aid that said this road needs to be redone, or?
No, sir.
No.
This is our assessment. As the county engineer, any, everything that you see and hear is our assessment of the minimum amount that needs to be done on the roads.
Alright, and so, this was out of compassion, because y'all knew y'all took my five million just to pave from Palm Hill Road to Baker Lane.
Yes, I, well, had nothing to do with that, I hate it, got taken away, but it did, I think, I think it's, uh, part of the, uh, youth detention center.
No, it ain't part of the damn youth detention center.
No, it was that, uh, that fire station.
It was a fire station. Fire station.
Fire station.
Yeah.
What fire station?
Greg's Fire Station.
No, that was originally in there too, otherwise Greg wasn't gonna get nothing.
Oh, it's early road extension, that's what it was.
Actually...
Moderate.
At the meeting we had over there, at Buster's office, Mr. Brown, not here, but he was lobbying for, I forget what the money was, and I said, "Well, I think it ought to go somewhere like Andrew Chapel, because it travels more traffic rather than, uh, three-pronged that went in and out, in and out." And, so, I have throw that one out there for you, and I think you got part of Andrew Chapel because of that. But part, part, did you get part of one end of it done?
So, he basically, Jared's taking credit for what did get done.
What, what Walter, or, or what Andrew Chapel ended up with was around a million dollars. And we had started on it, and we realized that that million dollars wasn't going very far along Andrew Chapel Road. And that's when we were told by the county administrator to just stop.
Which county administrator?
Yeah, which one, we've had the...
Yeah, you've had several.
I, I, first of all, Laura, can you verify what is left in the, in the, of the forty million into Andrew Chapel? Is there any money left on that one?
Walter.
Big goose egg?
Man, it's been zero for some time, don't you remember that flip-flop Carl Stringer was trying to do that y'all thought was...
We were five million to the good, we had five million...
Yeah, we've got five million, and it was no money. He was flipping and flopping, and that's when he and I got to bargaining about it, I said, "You don't have five million."
Jared never grasped what he was trying to say, I don't think, on that one.
No, I did, plain as day. We don't have five million.
Well, we sure know that, we spent that.
No, it wasn't no grasping it, it was like a flapping of words.
You just didn't, uh, go along with it, is that better?
Huh?
You just didn't go along with it.
Test.
I think you, I think you, I think you bought a radio system.
Yeah.
A portion.
Oh, a twelve million dollar radio system.
A portion of it. A portion of it, that's where you bought.
I see, there's gonna be more though, because we gotta buy radios now.
Oh yeah, all these radios we could, we thought the sheriff had that we could use, we can't.
Yeah.
No, we're still on the roads, but we're trying to figure out where the money went to. Don't worry about Andrew Chapel, because you have no money, moving on. What I'd like to see...
No, I still haven't made my point.
Well, they've...
Well, we don't have money either.
They have six hundred and ninety-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and ninety-five cents.
Well, they ain't listening to you there. Apple blossom. No, that's Andrew Chapel.
I guess the attorney's got a damn vote now, huh?
Hey, man, you know...
I make a motion to fire the consulting engineer.
You need a second on that?
Do I have, do I have your attention, Mr. Parker?
I believe that's the first time that's been mentioned. No, you can't.
Mr. Parker, now that I have your undivided attention, the six hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars that you have in on Andrew Chapel North, is that, is that something that is to be budgeted in the coming year?
Yeah, that's what I asked him, Walter, see, they didn't prioritize any of this. Only thing he did was put down what it's gonna cost us to bring these roads up to repair. That's it. So, we don't know which road needs more than others.
So, why couldn't you tell us which one is the worst? I know it's a unit system, but you can at least tell us which ones are worse, can't you?
As our attorney says, it's state law.
Unless it's like a two miles versus a half a mile, that's gonna run the...
Yeah, exactly, right.
Then I gotta do some figuring and everything. Yeah, I got it. And then, some of it runs up though because of curb and gutter, true? If some of it would run up because of curb and gutter, right?
Yeah.
But I'm gonna have to be now an engineer to figure out which one, or go ahead and just drive all of them, I guess while I'm out there knocking on doors, I can drive anyway, so...
Well, OD doesn't mean outside dimension.
How could Baker Road need any work done to it?
Right.
Well, there's a difference in Baker Road...
Well, that's Barker, I'm sorry, that's Barker.
I got it. Why? Why?
I would like to see a list, though, of just the roads in my district, please. That way, I know how much money I need for my district.
Can you get me a list just of the ones in, broken down to all districts? That way, I'm doing a unit system?
Well, this is it.
Yeah, but I'm talking about, they're all together. No.
No.
Well, just because sometime, yeah, because some of us have the same name of the road in both...
Yeah, roads in District One, roads in District Two, whatever. Right. That's right.
Yeah, well, before I vote on this road plan, I wanna look at my individual roads.
But it's still a part of the road plan.
Yeah, but I still wanna look at it.
With your, with your one vote.
Yeah, me and my one vote, wanna look at it. It grew, it grew substantially, yeah.
Well, it did.
Old fan and road.
Is this time for me to throw out the Wood Brown tax base? If you wanna hear the answer, then hear the same answer. It's not time. Wait a second.
Go right ahead, go right ahead, man.
Go ahead and try it, it didn't work for...
Make some nostalgia.
Wait. I bet you can't do it as good as Wood did.
Oh, I'm sure I can't.
You gotta chew that tongue while you're doing it.
Both sides. When he real serious, it's both sides, once, knowing it's serious, he just...
He damn sure play that call.
When he got really thinking it was...
He did something, he had to turn this way, bend down, so I just turned like this, and I was like, ah.
His phone, he dropped his phone, I know he was answering his phone.
I looked up, Laura was looking right at me dying.
Did he ever know what was going on?
No, he didn't.
He was down there digging with his phone, he'd get, he would bend over here and answer his phone.
I just wish that we videoed it.
Oh man, that would've been bad.
Oh God, I think that was the funniest thing.
This is the way Laura looked at it.
So, what else we got?
Y'all must have some right-of-way acquisition on this Andrew Chapel North. If you got six hundred and ninety-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and ninety-five cents...
They calling for reconstruction, isn't it, isn't it reconstruction? See, it's got forty percent, does that mean forty percent's been reconstructed, or it needs reconstruction? Yeah, so, so you just got reconstruction on here, which means it's gotta be totally dug out, rebuilt.
Which I think is what we were planning on doing for Palm Hill to Baker Lane.
I mean, you know... Hey, man, but you fought so hard to get that Highway Forty-three South, and you leave an office after you get it done?
Old Forty-three, you mean?
Yeah, whatever that is, yeah, yeah.
Have they proceeded out there yet?
Well, all along those lines, as we go spending our county tax dollars on overlaying these roads, wouldn't it be appropriate that we put up a sign saying, "These roads are being repaired in District Five," you know, J. Bishop Supervisor? Are your county tax dollars at work?
Laura Lee says about Rankin County, because some of them think, don't know the difference in LSRP and PPR.
And happen to mention whose district it is, you know?
Yeah, fine print, that was...
Because every other office gets to put, like, Judy Fortenberry, every piece of mail goes out, has her name on it, Becky, Larry, Brian has his cars running around here.
I have people that ask me if I'm the mayor.
How, how do they do that?
You the mayor? No, I'm not the mayor, I'm your supervisor. Yeah, I have a clue.
So, I think us as a board need to make a decision that from now on, we do this, we need to get us some signs, print it up.
We need to make sure we're legal that it's a unit.
Why don't you be legal?
Ain't that legal, it's Rankin County tax dollars, and it's in District so-and-so. You really?
You wouldn't be comfortable saying, what's the difference in putting a sign up out there at the library that lists everybody, every supervisor that's involved in that, uh, building of a library? No, no, that's during construction.
Oh, you're talking about like all the sand where it says?
But it had all the supervisors, but it did have...
As long as you just don't list out one.
Well, you ought to highlight the one that's, is, is, is his district.
Oh, I'm sure if they don't like us, they'll highlight it for us.
That'll be our job, Jared. You're right.
I don't, I don't, really don't understand the difference, really, I'm Riley J., I mean, Larry can put it on everything he has, Judy put it on what he's had, you got, I mean, John Sullivan, when he sends out something.
So, let me ask you this then, would it be okay if I paid for a sign to go out there and stick it up there?
I don't think so, because, um...
She's shooting me down left and right.
Any, any activity that tends to suggest that the voters of District Five are somehow benefiting from all of the taxpayers is a problem.
Well, I was just saying, your supervisor's working hard for you, you know?
Well, you can go out there and wave at everybody and put that on Facebook.
I mean, you've got a PR girl coming. She's pregnant, she's not gonna get out there.
Well, I would, I said, I would be fine with that. I, I think we do need to do something, though, that says, "This is your county tax dollars," and, and even list all of us.
And that's the kind of thing, in my opinion, that falls into what you were discussing about, a PR hype person.
Yeah.
That's the kind of activity that probably ought to be in the job description.
Alright.
Just like on the plaques of the buildings, that I gave Jeff H. right to H., listed all of your names, and all for completion theme, a completion of the reservoir, they're out there.
Dale, I got a solution. Who's their district in, you got vests for each one.
Yeah, now, that might be going a little far.
Exactly. Yeah. Alright. Do they tell you what size lettering needs to be? Well, it needs to be about the same size that McLaurin sign was, you know? So, John Moore wanted to make sure that was out there? Trying to think, who else got a opponent?
John? When?
John's got a opponent?
I know. Got Paul Bouchon, didn't he?
Oh, representative, Mr. Baker. Oh, representative. Mr. Baker.
Is Roy Rogers serving?
Yeah, who is? He's kinda the opponent. Tom, he's kinda the opponent. Yeah.
Oh, and he wanted it on the Forty-nine project.
Yeah, that's what it was.
And Forty-three ties in with it, you know, with the, the two projects together.
That makes sense.
On Old Forty-nine? Really?
All right.
That'll be done before signs ever get made there then. But we'll, well, I mean, you know, read out.
I don't, I really don't have a problem with it being there because it's taken four years to get the money from the legislature to pave the damn thing. I don't care if they know it or not.
But there's some gentleman who is leaving office.
I mean, I really, I mean, I, I've been fighting about Highway Forty-three North.
I know.
Right. What else we got?
Let's leave for Walters City, anything else.
That was most of the adjourned.
So moved. Recession?
Recession. Most of recess.
To the fifteenth?
Willcox. Now, the second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Bishop. All favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed.
All right. Craig, you and I gonna have to have a discussion. About.